Okay. Well, it looks like the clock's on the wall at six o'clock. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. The is, let's see. Be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provisions of legal advice by such counsel. One, opioid litigation. And second is discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, local workforce innovation and opportunity board. Two, New River Community College Board. Three, planning commission. Four, social services board. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We're in a closed session. Is there a motion to come out of a closed meeting?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
Next item on the agenda is certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And what this certification is, is our words were to you that we're only discussing matters that we're supposed to be discussing in closed session. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
Next item is invocation and a moment of silence. After we observe a moment of silence, I'll ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge, and I would ask us all to rise.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
There is an addendum this evening in regards to going to a work session to get an update from the Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Hank Barton. Is there a motion to, in regards to the adding this item?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
Next item is the Bike Share Program update. Emily?
I was really hoping you were riding in with a bike.
That would have been awesome.
I did say that they, I'd give it a spin.
Josh, to ride it though. We'll bring it up so everybody can see it. We have this on the line. So, good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we just wanted to give you guys a brief update on the Bike Share Program because the launch will be later this month. So, in preparation for the launch, we were able to get two demo bikes. If anyone went to Wheels and Waggons a couple of weekends ago, that was when we first got them. So, just to give you a little bit of background, last year, there was a request for proposals that went out for Bike Share companies, and it was contingent on a grant through DRPT to be able to get the funding. And Blacksburg Transit did get the grant, and so that sort of is how this program got started. It's a partnership between both towns, the county and Virginia Tech, and I serve as the county representative on that committee. We also have members of the Regional Commission, the NPO, and Blacksburg Transit who are on that committee that we've just been working out all the details on. Back in April, you guys authorized a memorandum of understanding, and that's the structure for how the Bike Share Program will keep moving forward. Right now, it's structured so that you pay a percentage based on how many stations you have. There will be eight stations on Virginia Tech's campus. There will be two stations in Town of Blacksburg and two stations in the Town of Christiansburg. And that's the first part of our launch. So, there's not an actual station in the unincorporated part of the county right now. So, when you guys signed off on that, there was no financial ask. Basically, staff time has been the biggest part of Bike Share for us right now. But we do have a couple of locations identified if Bike Share is successful that we think would be good locations in the county for stations. So, that's a total of 12 stations, and anywhere between eight and 20 bikes will be at each station. Depending on usage, how they get rebalanced, there is a contract with the local company that does the, that will do the maintenance. On the bikes, when you go to rent them, you can report if there's any damage or anything, and that bike gets taken out of the queue, and someone will come and get it and repair it. There will also be a local staff person known as the general manager, and that person will manage all the social media sites, make sure that all the day-to-day stuff is covered for Bike Share. So, Phase One is going to launch later this month. We anticipate that 75 bikes will arrive in town around the 23rd or 24th, and that will come, they'll come with the stations. So, there is a plate that goes on the ground that you then secure the bikes to. Those will all get delivered and set up during that last week in June, and hopefully, we'll be notifying you guys with some official logistics. But July 2nd is proposed to be the launch date, and there will be kind of two ribbon cuttings, if you will, because you'll be able to be at the mall early in the morning. That's one of those Christiansburg locations, the rec center in the mall. And you can hop on a bike and go down, and you can go all the way to Blacksburg if you're ambitious, and I'm sure some people will, but there will be places along the trail that you can stop and have a bus take you back to your car. And then, the second ribbon cutting will, everyone will come as a group to Market Square there in Blacksburg, which is just kind of a nice setting, already has some accommodations to have a little bit of a second ribbon cutting celebration. And that's pretty much all that I had to tell you. I just didn't want all of this, if you're following along, there has been some media coverage so far, and you saw the MOU, but this is one of our bikes, and we'll, like I said, it'll have 74 friends here by the end of the month. Are there any questions?
Supervisor King? No questions. Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Emily, did you say that you have identified some locations outside of the ones that are going to start? I'm just curious as to where would they be at?
Right now, the number one spot for a county location would be there at Merrimack at the trailhead, which also is the park location. We think right now that's going to have a lot of activity. If you see, if you, you can get one now at the rec center in Christiansburg, at the mall. Adding a Merrimack station, that's only two miles on the Huckleberry from the mall. So, it's a potential location right now.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Demots?
Did, did they end up renting or getting any of the assisted ones where you pedal and the bike assist, you could say?
So, there is an E-assist. That's a very good question. There is an E-assist launch that will happen. We're hoping later this fall, there's 13 E-assist bikes that are part of the package. The company that we selected, this is by Gotcha Bike, and their E-assist partner is Social Bike or SOBE. Well, they were recently acquired by Uber, and their bikes are sort of undergoing a rebranding right now. So, we didn't want to hold up the whole launch. We wanted to have everything operational by the time students got back and vacations were over and everything. So, we're planning sort of a second launch that will have the 13 E-assist bikes.
And I see taillights, a headlight on the handlebars. Is that like a horn or a bell?
It's a bell.
Nice.
Classic.
And the, the back is solar powered, so they'll be set up on stations that aren't covered so that the RFID scanner and the passcodes will always be functional as long as they've got some sun in them.
Nice. Great work.
Supervisor Biggs?
I'm just excited to really see this in action, and, you know, I saw it in Atlanta. It was really successful, so this will be exciting.
Supervisor Bowman?
It looks, it looks like a robust bicycle. How much does it weigh?
It's very heavy. I want to say 60 pounds. It is, yeah, it's meant to be a little bit of a theft deterrent. If it starts going faster than like 30 miles an hour, you get a notification that, you know, something's going on with this bike that shouldn't be going on. But it is very hefty. It's not made for a small, it's not made for a child rider.
How many speeds?
Seven.
And are the brakes?
There are brakes on both the pedal and on the handle.
Interesting. Thank you. It's exciting.
Supervisor Shepherd?
She stopped my thunder. I was going to ask how heavy it was.
It's very heavy.
I was just telling Carol, we've got it, we want to take it down to the animal care adoption center tomorrow, and I said, I don't know how we're going to do it, but I said, I think we'll call Mitchell.
Or you could just ride it.
Just send a bar. That's okay. Get a police escort.
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Emily.
Let's see. Next item on our agenda is a present, presentation regarding New River Valley Health District and Dr. Bissell.
Good evening. Thank you for having me to give you an update. I think the biggest thing to say is that New River Health District is getting a mobile unit, and we really appreciate the county's support of Mr. Meadows in helping us get power set up to the generator that's going to supply the mobile unit. One of the biggest things that comes out of every community assessment we do is transportation, so this will enable us to go to a lot of our citizens who can't get transportation to the health department. It will also enable us with some of our projects related to expanded HIV and sexually transmitted disease testing. We can go out, and we actually are going out right now to more brick-and-mortar facilities, but now we can actually go out with the mobile unit and set up in some key locations and hopefully get people in for testing and then for treatment. Just going down a laundry list of things, we've been very busy with the opioid crisis. Just a few weeks ago, in conjunction with New River Community Services, we launched a big educational campaign, "The Face of Addiction is Mine," and that's so important to get people to understand that addiction is not a moral failing, but rather a medical condition that needs treatment. And along those lines, we're working with New River Community Services all the way. As part of our revive layperson rescuer training, we've dispensed over 400 doses of naloxone in the New River Health District. We've helped our law enforcement secure the injectable naloxone for their mobile units in some areas. We're partnering with New River to try and get peer counselors. Any successful program in opioid treatment has to have a peer recovery specialist as part of that, so we're working with them. We're also hoping that, are helping to try and increase our MAT, medication-assisted treatment providers in the area, and trying to encourage a lot more of our primary care to get waiver to go ahead and do medication-assisted therapy. As far as communicable disease, we did secure additional funding from the state, so we are doing our outreach program. We're educating about communicable disease. Unfortunately, we have started to see an uptick in HIV and hepatitis C related to the opioid crisis. Now that we're cracking down on prescription opioids, we're seeing a lot more injection drug use, and with that comes needle sharing, and that comes with HIV, hepatitis C, hepatitis B. So, we're trying to get out into some of our harder-hit communities to encourage testing to get them into treatment as well. HIV, of course, there is no cure, but there is treatment. Hepatitis C, there is cure, but we have to get them off of drugs first before we can do that. Our mobile unit will be delivered next week, by the way. Our next big priority is sexually transmitted infections. The New River Health District, along with every place in Virginia and Montgomery County specifically, has seen a market increase in our sexually transmitted infections. Part of that is probably related to over-the-counter Plan B and contraception, and people thinking that they then don't need to use condoms and other protection. And part of it is education. We are actually working with the schools this summer. We have several of our health educators working with the schools this summer, and we are going to be training their teachers and their health educators on presenting a comprehensive, age-appropriate, K through 12, three Rs curriculum, which is rights, responsibility, and respect. And hopefully, we'll roll that out in the fall to all the schools in Montgomery County so that they'll get a comprehensive family life and sexual health curriculum. It also goes into sexual abuse, gender identity issues, and consent, so it's most up-to-date. We're also participating in a statewide work group about expedited partner therapy. So, if someone comes into the health department, they test positive, and we treat them, we can go ahead and give a prescription for their partner to get treated as well. We've established a resident rotation in public health, so the Lewis Gale residents are now rotating through the health department and helping us with our clinics, which increases our access and availability. It also increases our provider availability to be able to treat, and it also exposes them to everything the health department does. One of our biggest challenges is making sure that we get the word out about all of our services, and that came up in our community health assessment as well, that a lot of people have no idea all of the services that the health department provides. From immunizations, we have really put the gas on as far as school immunizations, so we're going to go back to all of our schools in the fall and do flu shots, and we'll actually now also start doing the second of the human papillomavirus vaccine. This spring, we did T-DAPS for our rising sixth graders, and we offered the first human papillomavirus vaccine, so now we'll offer the second one in the series for those students as well, and then they'll be complete. As part of that, we're launching a campaign using a viewing of the video of Someone You Love, which goes into the HPV epidemic, that's human papillomavirus, and it's linked to cervical and genital cancers. So, we're going to do all of that as part of our program. We've worked with both OB groups in the area to establish a case management program and to help increase our baby care participation. I can tell you that we've had at least two cases in our baby care and our resource mother programs where I think we actually saved infants' lives because those infants were not adequately nourished and taken care of, either with a misinformed mother or a teen mother. We were able to get the infants into the appropriate care, and then we were able to work with those mothers, and one of the mothers has gotten the baby back, and the baby's doing great, so that's a great success story for us. We also applied and have gotten a One Health CDC fellow who will be starting with us in the fall. One Health approach is so important because six out of 10 infectious diseases that humans get come from animals, so the One Health program will bring everyone to the table, veterinarians, people doctors, environmental health folks, and look at approaching. Our rabies investigations in the New River Health District are about 600 every year, and we haven't seen a noticeable decline in that. So, there's a lot of room for improvement, for education. We want to do more public awareness events. We want to do more public vaccination campaigns where people can get low-dose rabies vaccines, and we're also working with the vet school with their safety committee as well to hopefully address the rabies, but then also use that as a launching pad to other Lyme disease is a vector-borne illness, and the New River Valley lights up as probably the peak of Lyme disease. Dr. David Gaines, who's the state epidemiologist, is coming here and collecting ticks to try and study them and figure out why we have such a problem with Lyme disease. West Nile virus, Hanta virus, the list is endless. Salmonella, E. coli, that's an environmental thing, the lettuce that you eat and the E. coli. So, we're trying to get a One Health approach for all of these public health crises. Our pharmacy garden, we're expanding that. We're having gardens at all of our districts, including trying to do something in Rafterd that's more of an urban-type garden. We're really trying to emphasize that a prescription is not just a pill, and that a prescription is anything that's good for your health, and we're trying to encourage our clients to take ownership of their health and to eat healthily, to exercise, not use substances. All of those things we're working on. We've also expanded our Market Kids program, so now we're getting even younger children involved in gardening and the benefits of doing that and reaping what they, what they have grown and then eating it and, and healthy eating. We're trying to pass out cookbooks about how they can eat healthily and cooking healthily on a budget as low as $4 a day. We got another mobile unit for our WIC program for our women, infants, and children, so that will be getting around as soon as we get it fully outfitted, and again, just to get out to the clients that can't reach us. We are one of the pilot districts for our family planning and sexually transmitted infection marketing campaign for the entire state, so you'll be seeing some increased advertising about our programs as well. We're partnering with Carillion to do a community health assessment and a community health improvement plan. We're in the midst of working on that right now, and hopefully, that report will be available in the next several months, and then we'll transition that into the improvement plan. The biggest focuses are culture, healthy behaviors, including obesity and sugary beverages, substance use, including opioids, both prescription and illicit, marijuana, cocaine, amphetamines, tobacco, vaping. There's this misconception that vaping is healthy and regular tobacco use, and it's actually not. It's still the nicotine and the nicotine byproducts, and then risky sexual behaviors as well. We are all Red Cross shelter trained now, so if we do have an emergency, the New River Health District should be prepared to help with Red Cross sheltering. We are doing a pilot program within the health district for workplace wellness that we can then launch to other employers in the county and in the New River Health District. As we all know, that the morbidity of chronic disease is a significant financial and workplace productivity problem. And then, I think the last thing is we are on the road to seeking public health accreditation. We've developed our strategic plan. We're doing our community health assessment. We're putting it into our budget because it's not cheap, and then we're developing our quality assurance plan, so hopefully, within the next year or two, we will be fully accredited as well. So, I think that's most of what we're doing.
Wow. Supervisor Fidzikowski, do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I am amazed at the, how many programs that you're involved in, and I really do appreciate all that you do for our citizens, and especially when you're dealing with people with drug issues, gosh, it's, I know that's very, very tough, but thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Bike Share Demots?
I don't have any questions either, other than when you complete the community health, I think you said, assessment with Carillion, I would love if you could share the results of that with the board. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Supervisor Biggs?
Well, I'm really glad to have you here. I sort of asked for this because I think it's really valuable information for not just the board, but the community to know, and this is a way that you can get that word out. One of the things, I had a question, like, can you use the mobile unit for vaccines also? And the other thing, when you were talking about addiction, are you going to cover all forms of addiction, including alcohol addiction as well as the nicotine and everything else, right?
And that's why we really hesitate to just say opioid addiction, because addiction is a life, it's a disease regardless. And in fact, most people who end up addicted to opioids and other substances started out with tobacco. There's a high likelihood that they're using other substances as well. So, yes, we want to get the word out that it's multiple substances, it's not just one or the other, and tobacco is an addiction. Opioids are an addiction. Cocaine can be an addiction. It is, it is a brain receptor problem.
And I'm with Supervisor Demots. I'd love to see the community assessment, and, you know, we recently had good news about our county, just Montgomery County, being a pretty healthy county. Do you have any comment on that at all? I thought it was pretty impressive.
We are. I mean, Montgomery County in the state of Virginia is in 36, I think, was the number out of 133 counties, so I think that they are doing well in a lot of areas. I will say, we still have some room for improvement. Our STIs in our youth are, are going up. In fact, in Montgomery County alone, our chlamydia doubled last year and our gonorrhea doubled last year, so we have room there, but I think we do have a lot of successes to be proud of.
So, our focus, like, for our county might be in that area, addiction, any other thing that we should, of course, exercise, eating health, anything else we should be concerned about in our, just our county?
I think those are the big things in the county.
Big ones, okay.
You know, the bike program, you know, active, people being active and health-conscious and eating well, I think are, are big pluses in the county. Our teen pregnancy rate in Montgomery County is lower than the state average, so that's a good thing. So, those are the big ones.
Thank you so much, and thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bowman?
Could you take one minute and talk about the opioid face of whatever you call it?
It's "The Face of Addiction is Mine," and the biggest thing, I went to an opioid conference in Atlanta in April, and as people were trying to implement successful harm reduction opioid treatment programs, the biggest thing is the stigma. And people, overwhelmingly, people in this country acknowledge that opioids are a problem, addiction is a problem, but underwhelmingly, do people think it's their problem or in their backyard. So, and I met with a lot of law enforcement there, and they said, when they first started a lot of these programs, they would ask folks, you know, what do you think about substance users? And, and the terms that came out were druggies, dirtbags, bottom feeders, scumbags. And it's really, we have to transition, this could be your mother, your father, your brother, your sister, your friend, your neighbor, your colleague. People don't grow up wanting to be addicted and end up on the street in trouble with the law. It happens, and in most cases, it happens after, after a prescription, a legitimate prescription for pain medication. And so, we're trying to get that word out. This was sort of predictable 10 years ago when pain became the fifth vital sign. The drug companies said, oh, these new pain medicines are not addictive. Oh, doctors, you need to treat pain, you need to treat pain. So, it was sort of predictable what's happened, and, you know, so now we have to kind of, we now know, and when I was in medical school, you treated pain according to how your attending treated pain, and most people went home with a 30-day prescription of pain medications. We now know that three days and someone can become addicted, and, and that there is a threshold, and with each prescription and each time they take that drug, they get closer to that threshold, and once they cross that threshold, it's addiction. And, and then that's when they turn to the behaviors, the negative behaviors, the crime, the deceit, to satisfy that addiction. So, we really want to get the word out, and unfortunately, unless someone's been personally affected, it's easy to say it's someone else's problem.
I'm excited that the program is finally here.
Yes.
Thank you. Last question is the MAT. Are there any incentives for the physicians to get motivated to be part of that?
Can't, I mean, we can't offer any, other than encouraging them that this is part of primary care. A lot of states are making it part of their primary care practices. New Hampshire has a wonderful program, Maine has a wonderful program, where, you know, when you think about it, primary care can, can connect all the dots. They can get the patient into the mental health care, they can treat the patient's other medical conditions, and then they can also treat addiction, which is a chronic disease. So, we're trying to make it like this isn't different than diabetes or high blood pressure. It's another medical condition, and we have excellent data that people who are on MAT, they have less problems with law enforcement, they hold down jobs, they have stable family relationships, and they have stable housing, they're not out on the street. So, but it's a hard message. It's a hard message to get out there.
Because the physicians really don't have to do it.
They don't have to do it. They don't have to do it. There's no mandatory, nothing mandatory that they have to do it. And a lot of concern is that once they start doing it.
Too much on the money.
We don't have a lot of people prescribing now. So I think a lot of them are concerned once they start doing that, the door will be knocking down with people who need help. And we do, we need a lot more people prescribing. You know, we met with the DEA not too long ago, you know, and the pill mills have given things a really bad reputation. But the folks at the DEA are actually very supportive of MAT. And they're trying to shut down the inappropriate prescription of MAT, just like they're trying to shut down the inappropriate prescription of opioids in general. So they're supportive of our efforts to get more people legitimately prescribing pain medication and legitimately prescribing medication-assisted therapy.
Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for the presentation. It's very interesting.
Thank you.
Supervisor King.
No questions. Thank you for spending this evening with us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here this evening.
And I'll be back with the community health assessment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is John Wright with Taxing Authority Consulting Services. And he's going to provide us an update on the collection of the delinquent taxes and delinquent tax sale.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Members of the board, thank you for having me. Let me see if I can talk and work this technology at the same time. Just wanted to give you, give the board an update on where we are. And it's always a good idea when we start off a tax collection program that we set expectations on what we're doing and everyone's on the same page with where we're going with things. As I was introduced, I'm John Wright. I'm a partner with TACS. And our firm represents approximately about 67 jurisdictions in Virginia, 45 doing red panel and real estate tax sales. So just to start, I wanted to give you an idea of the accounts that we're collecting on. So we're collecting on all accounts that are two years and older. So that works out to approximately 276 parcels that remain as of the time that we put this together. So it works out to, and the information that you have up at the top here includes tax penalty, interest, and collection fees. So the overall amount that is outstanding to the county for tax penalty and interest is $526,000. So we typically see those collections. I mean, you see a good bump come in at the outset when letters go out. We're about a month and a half into collections and we collected about $16,000 so far. And that number will increase. It just takes a little bit of time to do so. So you all have a really good tax collection rate. You don't have a whole lot outstanding. And this is borne out by the overall tax year breakdown on the balances. So you can see your 20-year delinquency amounts to 29 parcels or $4,156, which is about $141 on average. So you've done a good job on collection. We're just trying to clean up some of the back taxes that are out there. So far, what we've put in place, we've had 402 collection notices that have gone out. Some of those came back returned. So we've issued skip tracing on 218 accounts. Also, some of the accounts that came over didn't have a current address. So we're looking for new addresses for them. We've also had, so far, after a month and a half, 186 telephone calls. That's both outbound and inbound, obviously more outbound calls than inbounds. And I can't say that 186 connected, but I can say that we've had that many calls outbound and inbound on these accounts. We've set up nine payment plans so far. And those eight payments constitute your overall amount that we've collected thus far. We are a collections law firm. So we don't immediately go to litigation. We do try to collect on the accounts to begin with before we unnecessarily add additional collection expenses, you know, the title search and orders of publication onto the taxpayer. So if they're going to set up a payment plan, we do like to connect with them to begin with. We get a down payment so that they have some flesh in the game. And they, you know, they're more likely to stick with the payments if we get a down payment from them. We prefer them to willingly pay. If they don't, though, we do try to locate assets that we might be able to leverage to be able to help them pay, you know, bank accounts, wage sources and things like that. But obviously, the backstop is the litigation and the real estate tax sale. So that's, and that's always in, you know, in the minds that we may have to go that next step. One of the things that we'd like to utilize when we're looking at a new client is where these parcels are located. So this is a proprietary method that we use to try to locate parcels and where they are located within the locality. So what you're seeing here are your parcels represented by the tax map, extruded from the surface of the earth by, depending on how much they owe in delinquencies. So here in the middle, you've got Triple J Investments. And there are four parcels there. That's one of your larger delinquencies. We have been in communication with them. We expect that to resolve itself shortly. But this gives you an idea of how we like to visualize these. It helps us know where the concentrations of problem properties are. And in some jurisdictions, and I'm not saying we would implement this here, but we also utilize site visits so that if we're on the ground at one particular large delinquent account holder, we would be able to look at this and see the smaller balances that might not pop up on our radar screen. So we could also visit those while we are, while we're out and about. One of the other things, I'm going to talk about nonjudicial sales in a minute, but that's an expedited process that's available for certain parcels if they're nonbuildable. This method also allows us to identify some of those parcels if they're small. And this is a good, for instance, this is actually a road that services several houses. It's clearly nonbuildable. Would qualify for a nonjudicial sale. But this is something that we would also point out to planning to see if that's something that, you know, should have been taken into the secondary system. Maybe it was missed some years ago. So we do try to resolve, you know, some of these problem properties. You got a couple that are listed in the Commonwealth of Virginia's name. Can't sell that. They just didn't get, they didn't get taken through the SG process years ago. So it's not just collections. We're trying to clean these up all around. But this method helps us identify these parcels. So I wanted to share that with you. Now on the tax sale preparation. I know we'd like to get something up on the board. So we are starting off with the nonjudicials. That's obviously an expedited process. It's a lot faster than the judicial sale process. We're running these two programs simultaneously. But we're going to get to the nonjudicial sale parcels before we get to the judicial sale parcels. So the expedited process is for properties that have delinquent taxes more than three years. If the building, or if the properties are unimproved and they're under $5,000 in value, they qualify for this process, provided there's not a deed of trust against the property. So we do pull current owner reports, title reports. And the recent change in the law under 58.13975 allows us to pass free and clear marketable title to these properties. So it makes it a little bit more valuable. We are fully aware that these smaller parcels, it's probably just going to be the adjoining landowners that would be interested in these properties. So as a part of our tax sale, in preparation for the tax sale, we send auction notices and notify the adjacent property owners. The best results are when you get two landowners, the property's in between two landowners and they get in a bidding war. Those are exciting. So that's always what we hope for. Additionally, properties that are between $5,000 and $20,000 in value may qualify if the property is unimproved and it's determined to be unbuildable because of the shape, size, location, if it's on the side of a mountain, something along those lines. So we're working with planning to identify these. We've sent 63 of these parcels over to planning on a spreadsheet and asked for their input as to whether or not they can determine whether they're buildable or nonbuildable. So we're well into this process already. The 74 parcels that are under $5,000 in value, we've already sent those out for current owner searches. So we're moving as quickly as we can on these. In addition, something that may be of interest to the board, you all have constituents. And constituents, I'm sure, sometimes are driving by dilapidated structures that you're having to contend with. I'm not sure how active the county is in determining that a property is a nuisance, or if one of the departments can declare a piece of property a nuisance. But if you do have one of these properties that are under, that are between $5,000 and $20,000 in value, even though they're improved, if they have a nuisance structure on it, under the new version of the law that went into effect last July, they would qualify for this expedited process as well. So something to bear in mind as we move forward. Judicial sales, taxes, of course, for more than two years delinquent. There's no limitation on the value. Our first initial ad should be published, and I think I said next week, but I think it'll be this Saturday, for 88 properties. And that's about $200,000 in your overall delinquency. So I know you got a long agenda tonight. I just wanted to give you just a quick presentation. Happy to answer any questions for you. And, you know, just the whole part of this is just, you get to see what we're doing and we're moving as quick as we can.
Vice Chair Demats.
So overall, there's $526,000 due in tax, like due to Montgomery County?
That's correct. And we typically, I never like to throw out percentages of what you can expect. But I mean, in general, after 12 months, we're used to seeing about half of that collected. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do that. But I just wanted to give some expectations on what you'd be able to see coming into. The overall delinquency represents about, I guess, one quarter of 1% of your overall budget. So I don't think you're plugging any budget holes with it. But we're going to get these properties put back on the active tax rolls so that they're not a problem in the future.
And that was my only question. I really appreciate the update and all of the information. Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs.
I appreciate the update too. And it's good to see you again.
It's good to see you too.
I remember you when you were younger than you are now. Let's say that.
My face wasn't quite as round when I had some more hair.
Before you ever worked for this company. This update's really been good. Is there a way we can get a copy of your presentation? And also, is there a way that we can continually be updated as you sort of go through the process? Like when you work for other localities, like do you update as you go? Or how does it work?
Well, typically, would update the treasurer and that gets sent to the, however how, he would update that. So that's typically how I do it. However, you know, I'm happy to, you know, I'll take my direction from Mr. Shelton. But, you know, in general, hopefully you're going to be able to see the money coming in. And that's the overall goal.
Yeah. So as you give the information to the treasurer, then he could send it along to us? That'd be great. All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Bo.
Thank you for what you're doing. I do have a couple of questions. I thought your graphic was awesome.
Good job.
So the judicial sales, the 200,000 that you're showing right there, when would you expect that some or all of that money were to come to the county?
Well, the fastest I've ever done a tax sale has been six months, but it's generally going to be about a year. I typically like to project it out to that amount to give me some breathing room. Because you always have, if it's not a title issue or a service issue, you're going to have something pop up. Someone may want a payment plan. Typically, once we get into the litigation process, that down payment turns into 50% down. So it's, you know, they really have some skin in the game at that point. But I would project out about a year. To that point, though, we do try to run, we can't take all your cases to court at one time. So we do try to run litigation in batches. So when you do have an issue with one of the properties, we try to kick it back to the next batch. If you've ordered Domino's pizza, you can see it being made. It's kind of like that. Yeah. So the next pizza that's coming along on the conveyor belt, you put the pepperoni back on that pizza.
And we appreciate you modifying your terms so that you could work with us. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
I don't have any questions. I was going to ask how long it's going to take, but you've already answered that. So thank you.
Supervisor King.
The first initial advertisement, is that to sell the property or just saying that you're delinquent?
Well, so the way the statute works, it's required that you publish notice in the newspaper 30 days before you file suit. Now typically, the way we would do this is we would publish that notice, let that 30 days pass, and see who pays before we order title on the properties. In this case, I know everybody's anxious to get going. So what we've done is any of the properties that we're advertising that haven't yet contacted us to at least inquire about it or give us some indication that they're working on it, we're ordering title on 20 of those now. Can't send all 88 to them because the title researcher likely will quit and not work with us. But, so to spread that around, we're using two local title companies to try to get the titles back into us faster.
Now, who sets the terms for payments?
Well, generally, I mean, we work off, you're talking about payment plans?
Yeah.
Generally, it's just, you know, we work off of the direction that, you know, our client gives us. But, you know, so we typically would do 25% down and get the rest paid off within 12 months. We're not stretching any out three years because you're just prolonging the problem. You know, and I would rather them get it paid up so they don't have to deal with me and don't have to have that collection fee on the books. Gets money into you quicker, too.
Is interest still being compounded on that?
Yes, sir, per your ordinance.
Thank you.
Supervisor Fidzikowski.
Excellent report. Seems like you guys are very thorough in what you do, and that is very good to hear. You showed a chart on there that I think went back 20 years. Is that what, is that what it did?
Yes, sir.
And you made the comment, well, we've done a good job on collections. Do you know when our last tax sale was?
I don't, sir, no.
Okay.
I'm just looking at it from a numbers perspective.
All right. That's the only question I have.
Yeah, thank you.
I've just got a couple of questions. I remember the numbers roughly ballpark was about $1 million in back taxes on real estate. And so does that mean that if I saw that number right, we've got in the last two years, we've got about $400,000 in unpaid real estate taxes? That will eventually mature that you can go forward on?
It could be. And so one of the things that you're likely to see, if we're moving quickly on these properties, you're going to see some of these noncompliant properties that haven't yet been turned over coming in to make arrangements. It's going to save them money. You know, initially, when it's turned over to us, it's 20%. So if they can save 20%, come in, get it paid. So hopefully, you're going to see a bump from that, even from the properties that haven't been turned over to us. That's typical when we start in a new process like this.
And excited about the real estate. And then the other aspect of it, if I remember right, is about $2,400,000 on a personal property. Have you guys started on the personal property at this point in time?
We have not, no.
Okay.
No, just on the real estate so far.
And whether it be an update from the treasurer or yourself, maybe October-ish, would that give you a better idea, November, somewhere along those lines, about where we would be at?
Absolutely. I mean, hopefully, we'll be able to know a little bit better where we're at every single month. But yes, absolutely. We should have a, we should have a date definite for a sale coming up by, you know, probably October, or at least the guidelines on when we're planning to have a sale. So we do try to project that out. Another thing that we do that's a little different is even when we have the sale, we've already got our data, our confirmation date with the court set up. So we don't have to wait on the court schedule. Sometimes that, I mean, it adds an unnecessary delay if we wait till after the auction to get the confirmation set up. So we try to schedule that ahead of time. Because you don't get your money until the court approves the sale.
Right.
So we try to get that over and done with as quickly as possible.
So the Commissioner of Accounts, do they approve the sales on a tax sale? Or is it strictly through the courts?
Yeah. Only one jurisdiction requires Commissioner of Accounts. That's Fairfax County. Everybody else, it's just the court.
Just the courts is satisfactory.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Did that spur any other additional questions, fellow supervisor?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the board's time.
Next item on our agenda is public hearings. I'm having problems pulling mine up.
So am I.
Sojourn Center is the first.
Sojourn Center is the first public hearing. I don't believe that anyone has signed up.
It's in work session.
That's work session after the public hearings. So in regards to the Sojourn Center and tax exempt request, there's a public hearing. This is the board's opportunity to listen to individuals who would like to address the board regarding the Sojourn Center's tax exemption request. No one has signed up. But if someone would like to come forward and address the board, you will have five minutes. You can please state your name and Marty, do I need to read this public hearing before you get started?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I apologize if you'll just bear with me. And I was, I still have not been able to pull it up on my board docs. Request for tax exempt status ordinance designating certain real property owned by Sojourn Center designated as a 1 Tax Map 347-A52, comma, parcel ID number 024427, and Tax 2 Tax Map 346-A8, comma, parcel ID 004225, located in the town of Blacksburg, Price's Fork Magisterial District in the county of Montgomery, Virginia. Exempt from taxation. Now, sir, would you please state your name and address? And you've got five minutes.
Yes, I'm Glenn. I'm a member of the Board of Directors for Sojourn Center. And I have three of my compatriots with me here tonight. with me here tonight. Dr. Tino Schmooz is here, and Dr. Ed Spencer, and Rick Salvo, who many of you probably know from his engineering work over the years. I'm very well aware that you're not here tonight to hear me speak about Sojourn Center. Hopefully, that time will come. I am also very well aware that it seems unusual to be here asking for an exemption status after listening to the bicycle presentation and the awesome medical district presentation, and, as I think it was said, the awesome graphics of the tax collection presentation. So, I feel a bit inadequate in that regard. But our president is not able to be with us tonight. She is incredible in explaining the mission and purpose and need for the Sojourn Center hospice facility. I do need to make a special comment about Dr. Schmooz. The name Sojourn Center was her idea. In fact, I would go so far as to say, if it were not for Tino, I would not be here tonight. It's also interesting that I'm the only one that's not retired. The other, the other three are retired. But I realize we are asking you for a tax exemption, and we have done the proper filing, and I appreciate the staff's support, and I appreciate the fact that you have allowed the public hearing tonight. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that I might.
This is really the time for the board to listen to the public and individuals and citizens like yourselves. It's not the time to respond. But thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other citizens, is there any other citizens who would like to come forward and address the board on this public hearing? Seeing no one else coming forward, I'll go ahead and close that public hearing. The next public hearing is a tax exempt request by DePaul Services, specifically the ordinance designating certain real property owned by DePaul Family Services, Inc., designated as One Tax Map 526-A-251, parcel ID 019464, and Two Tax Map 526-A-252, parcel ID 008113, located at 106 North Franklin Street, Town of Christiansburg, Reiner Magisterial District in the county of Montgomery, Virginia. Tax exempt status. There is no one signed up to address the board, but if anyone would like to address the board, you will have five minutes, and please state your name. Seeing no one coming forward, I'm sorry, I saw you starting to stand up. That's okay. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing. The next public hearing is a proposed ordinance to amend the fee schedule for parks and recreation fees, specifically the proposed ordinance enacted pursuant to Section 15.2-1806 of the 1950 Code of Virginia as amended, amending the fee schedule for the parks and recreation shelter rental for a half day by increasing the fee from $20 to $30, and the fee for full-day rental from $40 to $50, and by increasing the football registration fee from $50 to $55. There's no one signed up to address the board on this issue. If anyone would like to, please come forward, state your name and address, and you would have five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing. The next public hearing, I'll make sure I don't miss one, is regard to the proposed ordinance amending Chapter Eight entitled Planning and Development Increase Fee Schedule for Residential Agreement in Louva Plan, specifically the proposed ordinance enacted pursuant to Section 62.1-44.15, semi, not semicolon, colon, 54 of the Code of Virginia as amended, amending Chapter Eight entitled Planning and Development of the Code of the county of Montgomery, Virginia, Article Three, Erosion and Sediment Control, Section Eight-69, in order to increase the fee schedule for residential agreement, residential agreement in Louva Plan from $260 to $290. There's no one signed up, but if anyone would like to address the board, you can come forward and state your name, and you would have five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close that public hearing. The next public hearing is the proposed ordinance amending the fee schedule for planning and zoning filings, the proposed ordinance enacted pursuant to Section 15.2-2241 and 2286 of the 1950 Code of Virginia as amended, respectfully amending the fee schedule for planning and zoning filings by increasing the zoning permit fee from $10 to $20, by increasing the comprehensive plan amendment fee from $500. Hold on, there may be a typo.
That's right.
From $500 to $500 plus $20 per acre, by establishing a preliminary plat review fee of $100 plus $10 per lot, by establishing an extra plat review required fee of $50 for any review after the first two plat reviews, and by establishing an extra plan review required fee of $100 for any review after the first two plan reviews. With that being said, and thank you both for keeping me on track, is there anyone, there's no one signed up to address the board as to this amendment? Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Please come forward and state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close that public hearing. The next public hearing is a proposed ordinance amending the fee schedule for building fees and reinspection. Proposed ordinance enacted pursuant to Section 36-105 of the 1950 Code of Virginia as amended, amending the fee schedule for building permits and reinspection by increasing the permit fees for residential construction from 18 cents per square foot minimum to $35 fee, minimum $35 fee, to 22 cents per square foot minimum of $45 fee. For nonresidential construction from 28 cents per square foot minimum of a $35 fee to 32 cents per square foot minimum of a $45 fee, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical permit flat fees from $35 to $45, and building reinspection fee from $30 to $50. There's no one signed up for this public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to address the board, please come forward. You'll have five minutes. I'm seeing no one coming forward. I'll go ahead and close that aspect. Is there a motion to go into work session?
So moved.
Say it.
Any discussion? Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Hi.
Mitch Fidzikowski?
Hi.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Sheriff, would you mind giving us an update in regards to the Mountain Valley Pipeline?
Good evening. Sheriff Tucker, members of the board, Mr. Menace, thanks for having us. So, I guess, let me start with an email. I received this email from Supervisor Boon on June 1st. It was a quick question. Hank, please let me know what exactly we, the Sheriff's Department, is how it is working with MVP. So, I think if I read my response, I can sum up where we are as far as the Sheriff's Office is concerned. This email also was accompanied by several Facebook posts. I won't go into those, but just to clarify, the Sheriff's Office is not working with MVP in the sense that it's being projected in this email. The Sheriff's Office is, however, working with MVP, the Virginia State Police, all of our law enforcement partners, and any of our citizens who want to meet with us regarding the MVP project to ensure the safety of everyone involved on both sides of this issue. While performing our most important core duty of protecting our citizens and maintaining public order, we will continue to use all available resources at our disposal to accomplish our mission. And I want to emphasize that. I have every intention of talking to whoever I need to talk to to make sure that we ensure the safety of everyone involved in this issue, as well as everybody else in our county. At this time, we'll include meeting with our federal, excuse me, our federal and state partners. I will not place any restrictions on myself or my staff as to who we meet with, whether it be opponents of the MVP or representatives from MVP. The Montgomery County Sheriff's Office has been at the forefront of this issue since the beginning, both professionally and strategically, and we will continue to maintain that role without harboring any bias one way or the other. So, I would like to say that the Sheriff's Office is not going to get dragged down into some quagmire between the opponents and the pipeline. All we're here for is to make sure that everybody's safe. We're doing the best we can with the resources that we have to do that. Who I have with me tonight is part of my core team, Captain Weaver, Sergeant Cochran, and Chief Deputy Sinclair. They have been involved since the beginning as well. Especially Chief Deputy Sinclair, he held meetings long before the pipeline was ever in our area. So, we have been trying to keep everybody posted, be above board, and let everybody know what's going on. Obviously, since the pipeline is here, we have experienced some problems that we did not foresee, some. Some we did foresee, and some we have. Those that we did not foresee, we have brought in who we believe to be the proper authorities to help us. We've been in contact with VDOT. We've been in contact with Mountain Valley. Captain Weaver has the permits with him that VDOT has granted to Mountain Valley Pipeline. We've had complaints that trucks are not allowed on Mount Tabor over certain excessive weights. There is one sign on Mount Tabor that recommends that certain vehicles do not travel that road. It doesn't prohibit them. Obviously, so, just for an example, two big trucks are meeting on Mount Tabor. The citizens on Mount Tabor feel threatened by those sized vehicles on that road. They think it's dangerous, and they might very well be. The Sheriff's Office is not equipped to tell someone whether this great big truck is too heavy for their road or not. The Virginia State Police are. They have portable scales they can bring in, and we've been in contact with them, and they're going to do that as well. There are some things that we're not equipped to handle, some of the issues that VDOT is controlled of. We have no authority over VDOT. In many ways, VDOT has authority over us. So, we have contacted everyone we can think of to contact. We've been in contact as well with, I think, most of the concerned citizens on Mount Tabor. And we also have, or what I've done is, Sergeant Cochran is actually one of our daylight sergeants, so we had two shifts that worked daylight, alternating, and two that worked midnight. So, Sergeant Cochran and Sergeant Martin, who was not able to be here tonight, they are my daylight sergeants, and their shifts are especially watching that area of the county. And I wanted to make sure that we had a core team, so when someone called in a complaint, and I keep saying, Mount Tabor, it could be, it could be Catawba as well, it could be from anybody down, down there. I wanted to make sure that our deputies that responded were familiar and not, not someone that didn't know what happened the two or three days before. And hopefully, you know, the folks in those areas would get used to seeing the same people and feel a little more comfortable. So, if I could ask, my guys would come forward, and we would be happy to take any questions.
We'll start off with Supervisor Biggs.
I don't think I have any questions right now. You sort of clarified a couple of things, though, for me with the, especially the weight of the trucks, because I had seen the pictures and all of that, and that's been an ongoing thing out there. And I think, and you're right, it says recommended, because I actually saw that sign. It doesn't say prohibited, so.
So, and I didn't specify clearly enough, probably, but obviously, if there's an oversized vehicle there, if they're overweight, if they're, if they're being dangerous, if they're operating in a dangerous fashion, if there is a vehicle that should have the flag car and they don't, any of that is going on, they will be, they will be cited.
Thank you. That helps.
Supervisor Boon?
I have to say that your response has been outstanding. I've just been over, I've been overwhelmed with the requests on me, and then I immediately turn it over to you or the people in the county, and you guys are right on it. Sergeant Cochran, it's wonderful to meet you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And you've done an excellent, excellent job responding to. A couple of things that are just top of mind. So, just recently, they've been talking about cars getting run off the road because they feel very unsafe about the big trucks coming around curves or over, over hills unexpectedly, because obviously, we're not used to those huge trucks being on that road. And they feel compelled to be safe and get off the road, unfortunately. Is there anything, you know, what I have heard people say is, maybe they should just get dash cams while they're driving down the road, so at least they can document there was no other option but to pull off of the road to be safe, but really, to document so that there's more reason to have flag people or have cars leading and trailing cars? I don't know. Could you please speak to that?
We obviously can't, can't tell someone to or not to buy some type of video recording equipment, but we have made a contact in the past couple of days. Jason, do you have that?
Yes, yes, sir. Boon, I have spoke to, I've reached out to a point of contact and established Tom Bano, who is the lead safety coordinator and handles the MVP operations down there directly. I've reached out to him three times today over concerns that the citizens had of Montgomery County, especially in that area. I got to meet one of the citizens down there today, and I addressed an issue that we had right there in front of me, and I reached out to him at that point and addressed that concern. So, hopefully, he's following through. He assures me he is. He's established a, an email for me to email him directly, so he can build a paper trail, as they say, to address these issues and contact information. I advised him I'll probably be contacting him numerous times, along with other individuals in our department. And as the sheriff pointed out, they're reaching out for, you know, points of contact, such as Ms. Smith with the VDOT directly, as indicated in your emails. And I do keep track of those emails, and I continue to, for my notes, write each individual statement down in concerns of certain citizens in the Mount Tabor area. So, this is not taken lightly. We are reaching out and trying to keep the citizens of Montgomery County, not just in that area, but all throughout the county, safe. I've had a call today in the Shawville area, and we're addressing that, and I addressed it with the same individual. So, I have, I have, and not just me, the whole department, each one of our officers are reaching out and are concerned and doing their part.
So, back when, you know, a lot of the preserved Montgomery County people were presenting to the board, they said, "Do you really, board, have enough resources for this to be coming into our county?" And we were assured that we were. Do you need more resources, considering what you're experiencing right now?
Let the sheriff answer that question.
I believe there are a couple pieces of equipment that we could definitely use now, and I would rather not go into detail about either one of them. But one of those is about $3,000, the other one is about $4,000. Neither one of them, obviously, were budgeted in our budget. But we see now where they would be very useful. And, well, I don't mind at all telling you what they are, but one of them is one of the speed boards that also collects data, and we actually applied for two of those in a grant recently and were declined, along with some other equipment. So, it was a block grant, and we were not chosen. And we worked hard on it. And we worked hard on it, too. It was a well-written grant, we just did not proceed it. But obviously, one of the speed boards, and that's been requested by some of the folks in that area. So, if we could make that happen, sure, that would be helpful.
Do you need any additional manpower?
Well...
People power.
People power.
People power.
Right now, right now, everybody's working hard.
Yeah.
And I'll let you know, should that be the case, I promise.
But my question about that is, you know, you can't just hire somebody off the street and immediately get them trained to be doing and helping y'all, you know? So, I don't know what I'm, you know, I'm asking, because I don't know the answer.
Actually, Mountain Valley has asked the Sheriff's Office on several occasions if they could hire some of us, pay us overtime money, and that has been steadfastly refused.
Thank you.
Because we will not, we will not be biased one way or the other. It's not happening. And right now, to answer your question, we always need more manpower, but...
Could you speak to the overtime, maybe, that you're experiencing because of the unexpected volume of calls? Is there, is it unexpected? Is it, is it a lot of overtime?
We really haven't had any.
I can't say that we have at this point.
Okay.
We're expecting, but we haven't really at this point. Now, we diverted a lot of manpower that way, but during duty hours.
So, I want to repeat, I am overwhelmed by your support, and I really appreciate the responsiveness that you have provided, not just me, but I believe all the people that have been calling me, and probably a lot of people that are calling or emailing me. So, it's amazing, and I know it's coming your way, Steve, if it hasn't already. So, I'm surprised by the volume, but I am very, very grateful for your responsiveness. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to say, given my background, I totally understand your frustrations and what you're dealing with. And I would like to say, too, I don't, I'm pretty sure most of the general public don't understand how specific law enforcement duties work. That being said, I did see state police had at least one of those trucks stopped on the bypass weighing them yesterday, so that is happening. That's all I have. Thanks for all you do.
Supervisor King?
I don't have no questions. I just do personally want to tell you how much I appreciate each and every one of you. I know you're working hard, and I know, I know my district and their districts are pulling you in different directions, you're doing what you can, and I do appreciate it.
Supervisor Fitchausky?
The VDOT permits that you have copies of, are they overweight permits, or are they just permitting them to be on that road?
I think Captain Weaver can just read one little, pretty much sums it up.
Well, it's basically just a permit for the entrance where they're offloading the equipment and taking it up into the mountain to do whatever construction they're doing. The permit allows them for the entranceway, to construct the entranceway off of Mount Tabor Road. It specifies the size and construction and grade and all that such, but it also limits them in how long they can have traffic stopped to offload equipment. They have to have flaggers present when doing so, and that's pretty much what the permit specifies. Again, as far as the road goes, we've researched, there's really no restriction on that road as far as the trucks, the size of trucks or whatever. It's recommended that they don't go that way, because a lot of trucks, as you know, wind up getting stuck in that hairpin curve. So, it's recommended that they not go that way, but it's not a restricted access.
So, most of the trucks appear to be under the 80,000 pound rule?
Yeah, I would think so. That's one of the reasons that we reached out to the state police. As you know, they have the motor carrier folks that can come out and that are trained more so than we are. We don't go through that training, we don't deal with that per se as much as they do, to come out and actually identify that truck looks like it's overweight, let's put it on the scales, check the brakes, whatever it is, the things that they do to make sure that the trucks that are entering that roadway are safe. And so, we reached out to the First Sergeant of Salem District and asked him for some help, and he agreed to send folks up this way.
Have you all had any reason to stop the trucks, any of them, and check their, what their weight limit is on their vehicles?
We have not.
All right. Thank you.
Vice Chair Demonts?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate all of you for the extra work that you're going to on this, and also recognize the attention, and it is diverting from other important things that all of you want to pursue. So, thank you very much. I know you're dealing with frustrated citizens and probably angry people with Mountain Valley Pipeline as well, and I definitely appreciate the place that you occupy in the middle of all that. Thank you for your time tonight.
I've just got a couple of questions. In regards to, and as I understood, what we did on Mount Tabor Road is know through truck traffic, and is it because that they're delivering that allows them to go on? And I just want to clarify that, because some of the emails said we had passed a resolution, but it's because they're not going all the way through, it's because they're delivering on Mount Tabor Road. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I'm passing a couple of times this week, or last week, I was going to Giles County in the mornings, 18 tractor trailers, three pipes each heading this way. The other, next morning, it was 13 on 460 heading from Giles and going towards Mount Tabor. I noticed that there, it looks like they're using a staging area right there at Pandapas. Is that for, to gather up the flag cars at that point in time, or do you know?
I'm not familiar with it.
It seems like there was three or four trucks...
I'm not familiar with the staging area.
Okay.
I will gather more, more information on that. Like I said, I'm continuously reaching out. This was brought to my attention on the 7th of June, and I'm reaching out, trying to get contacts, and the best contact that I have so far is Tim Bowen. I will reach out to him directly tomorrow and through, out his email, and see what plans, you know, see if I can get actual schedules for these trucks. Now, that's, I'm not saying that's going to happen. Most of the traffic I witnessed today was coming from Mount Tabor out of Roanoke, from that end. It seems like they were unloading their payload, just to give you a little information. And they were occupied by flagger trucks. There was a vehicle that I was actually speaking with one of the citizens down in the Cold Bank Hollow area, and interacted with a, you know, a truck on a flatbed. It was not oversized, no more oversized than a cattle trailer or someone, you know, bringing the horses out of that area, which is done frequently, but it did not have a flagger. So, I reached out to Mr. Bano, sorry, and advised him, you know, it may be a good idea in the future, if you feel like a truck is delivering a payload of any type, whether it be equipment, to have a flagger with it if he has the manpower. Again, I'm making these suggestions, but nothing's in law or a violation right now. I'm just trying to work as a liaison, basically, between the citizens and deliver an information to you and to the sheriff, chief, and captain, so...
Did they give you any projections of how long we expect the truck traffic with the pipes? And they may have not given you that idea, but I was just, when you're talking with them, if you could get a projection, because it's, my understanding is they're delivering to the site, they only want to offload them one time and are doing that in that fashion. And I'm just thinking, 18 tractor trailer loads a day?
I think the chief has that information, I'll let him advise you on that.
I spoke with a representative of Mountain Valley two days ago. I made a phone call and asked them if they could please provide us some insight as to how long we would be expecting this amount of traffic in that area. Their best answer was through the end of June, hopefully, we'd be dying off before the 4th. There would be a lull during July and expected to pick back up once they start moving out and starting doing a remediation. They'll be bringing in, taking out the heavy equipment and bringing in some other equipment to do the remediation, which will pick back up to facilitate that, which there, what I was told, anticipated sometime in September, try to be finished. So, that's, that was their best guess, but what we're seeing now, probably through the month of June.
Thank you very much. Does that spur any other additional questions? Supervisor Biggs?
I wanted to go back to Supervisor, when Sarah was asking about the equipment, and you said there were two pieces of equipment, you specifically mentioned the speed board and how it can collect data. Like, what kind of data does it collect?
It collects the traffic count. Also, it don't want to hold me to this, but with our technology now, I'm pretty sure you can set a limit on it. Excuse me. It will pick up anything after, if you set it at 45, it will pick up anything in at nine or more above that and log it. Traffic count, just useful stuff.
So, how, could you, like, help me understand how it would help in this particular situation? How would it help?
Well, it would help us, especially on Mount Tabor. It would help us track how many vehicles are speeding and what times they're speeding. And that could be useful anywhere else in the county as well. Most jurisdictions have those now. You see them hanging in Christiansburg. And we have an older style of that that doesn't, it doesn't do speed or something. It just collects the data, right?
Okay. I guess what I was, you didn't mention the other piece of equipment, but are these things that you feel are needed, that we need to consider to look at purchasing? Or is it something you could, since you didn't want to maybe mention the other equipment, something that you could share with the county administrator? And, I mean, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking, is it something we need to consider?
The speed device would definitely be useful now, and it would be useful later at other spots in the county where we're having, when someone, like, we have folks who call in all the time, "Use my driveway, run radar." Well, we'll go use the driveway and run radar, and for three days, we won't see but a couple cars that are exceeding the speed limit by a few miles an hour. So, it would be useful for those types of instances. I'm not, I'm not standing here begging the board for money bottom on them. You asked if there was any equipment, so that's, that's one piece.
And this other piece of equipment that you didn't mention, would that be more specifically for use all over or for use just with this situation?
I think the other piece of equipment, I spoke with Mr. Meadows about several weeks ago, and he gave me to go ahead and purchase it. The problem is, is there's a long time to get one. It's a decimal meter, and you can't just go buy any decimal meter app, because we have folks like Supervisor Tuck, who will challenge us in court and win, so, not that he would, but...
Not that he would.
Yeah, we would have to buy a very expensive piece of equipment that takes time to build. And so, I reached out to Chief Sisson and his deputy chief, Christianburg, who are currently purchasing one because of the starlight issues.
Right.
And they're well down the road and getting that thing built, and they have said that we could train and use that piece of equipment to monitor noise levels out there as well. So, I don't know that there's a real necessity for us to jump up and spend $6,000 or $8,000 on one at this point, if we can use that one, because quite honestly, we just don't use a noise meter all that often in the county. So, we're going to try to just partner with them on that one and get through that.
Okay. Well, that really helps me. So, if there's something that you really feel is important, or you go back and you feel maybe about the speed board or whatever, you need to let us know, because otherwise, we're not going to know. So, if it's something that you really feel you need to have, we need to know, is all I'm saying. And I think that goes back to your point of, you know, when this all started, we all thought we had everything we needed, so, I guess that's all.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Sure.
So, reminded me of several other things that I wanted to ask you about. First off, Sheriff Parton, I thought that your response to my email on June 1st was very good. So, thank you for it. Could someone clarify the rules for long trucks around the curves and up and down the hills?
Well, there with any other truck, or any other traffic, and they have to operate in a safe manner, if they're too long to remain in their lane, that's why they would have to have flaggers. There's really no, in researching code, there's really no code that specifies, you know, a distance, you know, does that have to be 50 feet in front of the truck, 100 feet in front of the truck, or two miles in front of the truck? I mean, if you go out on the interstate and see some of the manufactured homes, you'll see a marker car, and it may be three miles ahead of the truck. And a lot of times, I'm thinking, well, what good is it doing? Because there's 900 cars between it and the truck. So, there's really no rule per se as far as code that can be enforced as to how far ahead. It's just it has to be there, trying to warn folks that there's a big load coming. And obviously, it has to maintain its control of the vehicle and things of that nature. But there's really not a per se set standard that we have that we could enforce.
So, if we just use that hairpin turn and the big trucks, there is no way that those big trucks can go around that turn without going into the other lane. And we've talked, I mean, I'm not, I'm restating what Preserve Montgomery County talked about many times, so I'm finally catching on. But, so, wouldn't it make sense for them to always have a flagger at that, you know, at that curve in case oncoming cars aren't expecting?
So, Sergeant Martin on Saturday morning made contact with the Assistant Superintendent of the Pipeline. He also sent us his business card. He was promised by this fellow after they asked for overtime deputies again, that they are planning to bring in more pilot vehicles and escort all vehicles over one ton to stop traffic in hazardous areas to attempt to make travel safer on Mount Tabor. So, Sergeant Martin said that this guy was the real deal, and he felt like he was going to do whatever he needed to do once he got a phone call from us saying, "Hey, listen, you're not doing what's right. Let's get it fixed."
So, it seems to me that the big, long trucks are all over a one ton, so can you reiterate what we should expect from MVP?
Well, hopefully, there's going to be more pilot cars.
Okay.
And they're going to be safer than obviously the citizens in that area feel like they have been.
Okay.
And we're down there as much as we can be, to the point of we've almost got someone stationed. So, we're trying not to code that route just yet, but it's probably coming.
Yeah. I do want to speak to Chair Tuck's comment as far as the truck count and Captain Weaver. To my understanding, there are no pipes on Brush Mountain yet. I could be wrong. I know they're down Catawba Valley, because you can, I would encourage everyone to drive three and a half miles from the cheese factory at Bluster's Gate and Harding Road, and you're going to see the pipeline and all the pipes and the big equipment and all that kind of stuff. It's kind of a little bit harder on Brush Mountain because it's behind the woods and stuff like that, but you can see it on Mount Tabor, too. So, if all those trucks that we've been seeing come down Mount Tabor have just deposited, you know, a fraction of what's going over the mountain, I expect a whole bunch of more other trucks are going to be coming down, you know, and go past the end of June kind of a thing in volume. A question that I have for us and the resources that we have on our website, it seems to me that we get a lot of this, we get a lot... me that we get a lot of this, we get a lot of emails that say similar things. Not all of them say similar things, like the trucks, like the noise, like the, you know, the guard rail, like the, you know, that it'd be useful for the sheriff's department to say something like, "Okay, any questions about the long trucks and needing flags or pilot cars? Here is what, instead of watching this video, here is what the code or what we can or cannot do, but, I don't know, next steps," or something like, not next steps, but, I don't know, just to help inform people so that we don't have to revisit the same things from the next people down Catawba Valley or over in Elliston and things like that.
We can certainly take a look at that and see what could be added.
I don't know if that's something that could be useful, but it might be useful. And I do, I do very much appreciate you being here tonight, because it was very last minute, but it seemed to me that the volume of those emails and calls were just ramping up late last week, that I thought that this would be a great opportunity for you to come and show the community how much you are doing for us. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to say, let's go ahead and take a break. Oh, we need to take our work session first.
Move to go out of work session?
Second.
And any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I did it.
And I did the second.
Supervisor, yeah.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
It's nine o'clock. Do we want to take a 10-minute break?
Be back at 10:00?
No. Be back at 9:00, Tim. All right. We'll go back to the session. And next item on our agenda is public address. This is the board's opportunity to listen to citizens. It does not have to be on any particular topic. I don't believe that anyone has signed up, but you don't have to sign up. You can come and address the board, state your name and address. Again, this is not the board's opportunity to respond to you, it's to listen. Is there anyone who would like to come address the board? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg. I just want to tell you that I am extremely impressed with Sergeant Cochran and his responsiveness and his community, his ability to communicate with the community. I was the person on the bike on the road, and we were the ones that had a discussion. But I feel that his attention to the protection and care of the citizens of Montgomery County is exemplary. I also feel that as a citizen, that I would like to see the sheriff department have more resources, certainly as personnel. I do feel that they do need more. It's hard to imagine a project of this size and saying that, "No, we're good with what we had before." I mean, give me a break. That doesn't even make sense. So, I'm putting my plea into the board for, I don't know how you guys can possibly do this, but maybe give them a gift of another personnel. The other thing is that we don't have any pipes at all placed from Johnson's Ridge, and this is on both sides of Mount Tabor, all the way to the top of Brush Mountain. So, they only bring three pipes at a time, and there's a lot of pipes that need to come, because we've already had tons of trucks coming through. One thing, Tina's going to follow up on me to cover whatever I don't, but Tina lives down Mount Tabor Road, and if you're going with pipes down past her house to Roanoke, you are not going to dry run, not to Catawba. You are a through truck going to possibly Bent Mountain or God knows where. So, that is something that needs to be taken up with whoever's going to regulate this state. I don't, I don't know. The other thing is that I believe they have 24 hours to get mud off the road. That's what I've been told. With just a little bit of rain like we've had, Tina has pictures of mud all the way down the road past Buck Cox's house from where the crossing is, which is considerable. It's not just a little patch. And mud is very slippery. And even though you've got 24 hours to clean it off, you can have plenty of accidents in that time period. It's a dangerous thing. It's not, you know, as far as citizens that live out there in safety, this is not acceptable, even though it's the law. Maybe it's legal, but it's not moral. And Tina has also mentioned, we have trouble with the trucks. I don't know anything about the weight, but the length of the trucks, they're not standing on their side of the road. So, either people, if they see something, might slow down and get off the road, but there's plenty of people that if they didn't get off, they would have an accident, and they wouldn't, it wouldn't turn out good for them. But these trucks are considerably bigger than any vehicle that we have on the roads. And I am pleased with the response of Sergeant Cochran, totally pleased we are working together to get driveways for him to notice things, and he's working with VDOT. And I feel like they're doing everything that, you know, they can do. So, I'm very pleased with the response. But Tina has mentioned that she says that these trucks are not even going to stand on their side of the road, because they're so tall that the trees, you know, they have to be in the middle of the road, because the tree's on each side. The other thing is, the guard rail's out again, and apparently MVP, of course, is saying that they didn't do it. And I'm like, well, then, who did? Because, you know, they have the most trucks. I mean, just with percentages, you say, yeah, you're the guys that did it. And I'm thinking, so does that mean that we, the taxpayers, then have to replace this every time they go by, because nobody can prove that they did do it? These are just some issues and problems, and of course, I don't believe that things are totally ramped up down in the Elliston way yet. So, you know, this, just because they think they're going to be done in June, which I highly doubt, because there's no pipes laid and no, nobody's made a trench yet anywhere. Nobody's tried to blast over the mountains, and that's going to take a while. And so, I think that it's, you know, wishful thinking to think that they're going to be done by June, have a little break over the summer, and then continue and just, you know, do this. In fact, yeah, I think that would be impossible. Thank you.
Doctor, please state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Tina Smoosh, 5555, Mount Tabor Road. Catawba, Virginia is my mailing address, but I live in Montgomery County. And I guess I could just say what she said, because she had covered all the points that I was going to say. But I think one of the points is, there are many of us that have pulled off the road to allow trucks by, and we weren't, you know, run off the road, but we had to get off the road for the trucks to get by. So, I mean, you are probably only hearing about the tip of the iceberg. Had friend come out from, she traveled down Catawba Road on Saturday. She goes, "I was run right off the road by a big truck." And I said, "Well, you know, welcome to our world." She's a department chair at Virginia Tech, and she was being honest. She didn't get hurt or anything, and she probably more pulled off before something happened than runoff. And it isn't just pipe trucks. It's all kinds of huge trucks carrying equipment and other things. So, I didn't want you all to have the impression it was just the pipe trucks, and once they had all the pipe, it would go away. And I was disturbed when, at the foot of my driveway, I'm watching pipe trucks go by, realizing, this isn't pipe for our county. They're using Mount Tabor Road as a thoroughfare to get to Roanoke or elsewhere. Now, I can't see the road from my house, so I just happened to be down there two times to see this. So, I don't know how often they're using Mount Tabor as a thoroughfare. The police really have been, been great. Our officers have, you know, responded to everything. And I had to report to VDOT tonight, because it's a wet mud slick on both lanes of road, down on some of our really steep slopes near the Slossers Chapel area, once you get around the bad curve. Do we pay for replacement of that guard rail every time it's damaged and has to be replaced? Is that something that the county pays for? No? Okay. I just wondered, because it's happened a couple of times already. And in spite of our officers saying, you know, "We can handle it. We don't need more." Boy, I don't know how they're handling all the calls related to this. So, I would put in a plug for getting them extra help, even if they're not begging for it. So, thank you.
Is there any other citizens that would like to address the board? Going once, going twice. We'll go ahead and close public address. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
I would like to have one of the items removed from consent agenda for this, at this time, till sometime down the road.
And which item is that?
It's F, the VDOT addition, Tucker Road.
Okay. Now, Marty, do we need to vote to remove that item, or can we just?
What was it?
The prices for...
Discontinuance and/or abandonment of prices for roads, Tucker Road, the last one.
F. All right. So, there's a motion to remove it. Is there a second to his motion?
Second.
Any discussion in regards to that?
Well, then, what happens to it?
It'll come back in later time.
Okay. Is there something that we need to do to clarify it or something?
I think there was something came behind the lane.
Error that we need to get clarified.
Oh, okay. Well, then, that makes sense, yeah.
All right. So, there's a motion, a second. Any further discussion about removing that from the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye again.
Aye again.
All right. Now, consent agenda. Is there a motion regarding A through E?
Same move. Second.
Any discussion?
What is, what are they doing to Brush Creek Road there?
Oh, you have best odds.
Make it a private road.
Make it rustic road.
Make it rustic road.
Designated as rural rustic. Emily can give you the technically correct answer for that.
This is a portion that we applied for revenue sharing, not back in FY17. If it's designated as a rural rustic road, it's, the threshold for improvement is a little bit lower. It gets, the funds go more to the paving than any of the grading and ditching and things like that. So, it's able, we're able to improve it for a lower cost if it's a rural rustic designation.
Is it still going to be paved?
Still going to be paved.
All right. I don't want none of that other funny stuff.
All right. There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item is new business, and the first item is item A, 2018-2019 budget appropriation.
Same move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
I need to read a disclosure statement. Pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, I, Darrell Shepherd, a member of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, make the following disclosure. As a member of the Board of Supervisors, I am expected to participate in the discussion of and to vote upon the appropriation of the county budget, which includes the appropriation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools. My wife and I are currently employed in positions with the Montgomery County Public School System, and our annual income exceeds $5,000 annually. I am a member of a large group of employees of the Montgomery County Public Schools, the members of which are affected by the appropriation of the Montgomery County Budget. I am able to participate in discussions and approval of the appropriation of the county budget, including the appropriation of funds for Montgomery County Public Schools fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Therefore, I will participate in the discussion of and vote upon the appropriation of Montgomery County Budget, including the appropriation of funds for Montgomery County Public Schools. A copy of this disclosure has been filed with the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
I must read my disclosure statement. Pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, I, Steve R. Fidzikowski, a member of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, make the following disclosure. As a member of the Board of Supervisors, I am expected to participate in the discussion of and to vote upon the appropriation of the county budget, which includes the appropriation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools. My wife is currently employed by the Montgomery County Public School System, and her annual income shall exceed $5,000 annually. I am a member of a large group, my wife being an employee of the Montgomery County Public Schools, the members of which are affected by the appropriation of the Montgomery County Budget. I am able to participate in discussions and approval of the appropriation of the county budget, including the appropriation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Therefore, I will participate in the discussion of and vote upon the appropriation of the Montgomery County Budget, which includes the appropriation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools. A copy of this disclosure has been filed with the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
I'm glad to hear that other people have to read long statements.
Aye.
Same.
Mr. Chair, if I can just thank the board for moving forward with that, and also want to thank Deputy Administrator Edmonds. She has been on vacation, and she came back tonight just to make sure we got the budget done.
Thank you. Next item is item B, amend fee schedule for parks or recreation. Is there a motion?
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item is item C, amend fee schedule residential agreement in lieu of a plan.
Same move.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next, amend fee schedule as to planning and zoning filings. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next is amend fee schedule building fees and reinspection. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
I would like to make a point before I vote. There's several people in my district that have been building houses over this past year, and I've had a bunch of complaints about the timeliness of how those inspections and all those go, and the complaint about the fees. If they're going to have to pay the fees, then why can't that be done on a more prompt basis? I have contacted the county administrator at least once, and I know of another one that probably called him not too long ago about this. So, I understand the fee. I just, I have a little bit of a, of a problem with it because of that. I mean, I think if you're going to pay that kind of money, then you deserve some kind of respect when you need that service provided. But anyway, no.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no.
Next item up is county attorney's report. Next item is county administrator's report.
Just a couple of quick things tonight. We're in the middle of June now, but the schedule doesn't seem to be slowing down very much at all. I want to remind the board of a couple of meetings. This Thursday night from 4:00 to 7:00, there is an I-81 Carter Study presentation by VDOT at the Holiday Inn Valley View. I am planning to attend that. I know that we have some other staff that are planning to attend as well. My wife was on Interstate 81 yesterday, coming back from a long trip to Kentucky, and she made great time until she got to Draper and sat for two and a half hours.
Yep, there you go.
It was a ma, really, and I think our clerk was tied up in that one too. We've got to do something about Interstate 81. There are no alternatives when there are major accidents like yesterday. The secondary roads such that we have that can take some of that quickly clogged up as well. She tried to get off on another road and got gridlocked again. We need to have input on I-81. I remember when I was city manager in Bedford in the early 2000s, I-81 was an issue. It's still an issue, and we've got to address that. Two meetings next week to remind you about. The joint meeting with the Town of Christiansburg Town Council is next Monday, 9:00 at 6:00 o'clock. That's at the Great Road Events Center. We will get an agenda out later in the week on that, but it's at 6:00 at the Great Road Events Center in Christiansburg. The joint meeting with the Roanoke Airport Commission Authority is next Thursday, the 21st, and I believe that one's also at 6:00 o'clock. Is that correct? It's also at 6:00 o'clock. I will miss that one. The Virginia Local Government Management Association Annual Conferences next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And I'm the professional development committee chair this year, so I'm in charge of the conference, so I can't miss that one. I got to be there to make sure where my neck will be. That's all I have.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't really have a report. I don't know if you guys remember, a couple of months ago, the young lady took her in life here in Christiansburg, a teenager. Her dad is a really good friend of mine, and I just wanted to let everybody know they're going to have a benefit. Her dad is big into billiards, and they're going to have a pool tournament at Bull and Bones on the 14th of July. I don't have any details just yet, but, and all the proceeds are going to go to help with their financial issues with, you know, the burial and stuff. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Supervisor King?
What? I don't have no report. I just want to tell the staff how much I do appreciate everything they've done on this conversation, study, and all this. I've heard a lot of good reviews about it, and a lot of employees are really appreciative. And I want to thank Marty for all he does, and that's all I have.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Yes, it was very timely that Craig would bring up the 81 story. I had a, I participated in a joint meeting between the Roanoke Allegheny Regional Commission and the Region 2000 Commission, which is out of Lynchburg. The guest speaker was the Secretary of Transportation. She gave an excellent report and highlighted 81 improvements. And I thought it was very encouraging. Of course, time will tell if any of that comes to fruition, but she said of all the meetings around the state, she encouraged everybody to show up. We talked about, prior to her speech, we talked about a lot of other transportation issues, and I thought it was, it was time well spent. But again, I was very encouraged about the 81, and she talked a little bit about rail too, and us. So, I think it was a, it was a good, it was a very good meeting. So, hopefully, something will come out of it.
Supervisor Biggs?
The only thing I'd like to report is that the Fish Fry was a big success, and I really enjoyed seeing Supervisor Demonts serving up the drinks, and then Delegate Hurst serving up french fries, and our sheriff was serving up slaw. And it looked like to me you had a lot of people going through there, you know, so I hope you raised a lot of money for the good causes that you raised money for. So, got to see a lot of my former students and their parents, so that was really good.
Supervisor Bond?
I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Department again for everything that they're doing. I believe that they're doing an outstanding job and continue to be challenged, and we need to support them as much as we can. I also want to thank the concerned citizens from Mount Tabor, Dry Run Road, Catawba Road. Without your help, we couldn't help you be safe, and that's a gift we don't all have. So, thank you. I'd also like to thank the Director of Health. That was an excellent report. And I also want to give a shout out to Blacksburg High School Boys Soccer because they won state championships, and that's outstanding. Can't beat that now that we're in 4A. And I also want to thank staff and Carol. Has she left?
Yeah, I'm over for vacation.
Trying to get that last little bit of vacation.
Yeah. For everything that you've done for the budget, as well as what we approved today. So, thank you for everything that you do, as well as the compensation plan. Thank you.
Vice Chair Demonts?
Well, just two things. One, going back to the Fish Fry, it was great to see you there as well, Mary. I did lose my slaw serving spot, but I lost it to the sheriff, and I'm not really going to fight with him over that because that would be a bad idea.
He has a gun.
Yeah, he has a gun. Also on the serving line was the club president and one of the Rurutan Club Scholarship recipients, local high school senior, well, recently graduated high school senior that, one of six that the Rurutans were able to give scholarships to this year due to money raised in our Dollars for Scholars program at the Fish Fry. So, it was really great to have such an esteemed lineup on the food, and myself and my son and a Cub Scout got to serve drinks, and that was a whole new ball of fun. Ice was everywhere. But if you missed the last Fish Fry, we have our next Fish Fry on July 14th. That's from 5:00 to 7:00. So, if you're attending the event that Darryl mentioned, possibly you can make time for both that evening. And our band that night will be the Blacksburg Community Band. And then I also just wanted to remind citizens that are interested in voting in the primary tomorrow. Polls will open at 6:00 and close at 7:00, so make sure to get out and vote.
Thank you. Just a few things I want to talk about. We were able to see something that we did together, come together, and in the presentation